Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 23rd. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a jam-packed agenda. But before we get to that, Mrs. Ray, we also have a jam-packed public announcement in upcoming meetings.
Sure do. Probably the longest one yet.
Take a deep breath.
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, the Energy Committee, Historical Commission, McQuann Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Recreation Commission, the Cultural Council, and the Economic Development Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. The Hanson Public Library is applying for a state construction grant for a new or renovated library building and will have an article at town meeting to appropriate funding in anticipation of the planning and design phase of a project. Residents are invited to attend an informational session on Thursday, April 25th, at 6:30 p.m. to learn more and to ask questions about the grant, the town's need for a new library facility, and the warrant article. The library is also pleased to share news about the completion of a library building program which is based on community input, describes what a new Hanson library could be like. A copy of the document is available at hansonlibrary.org/building-project. Please join Hanson Community Power yesterday.
There's also a meeting on May 2nd, though.
On Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the Hanson Police Station Community Meeting Room for a community in-person and virtual meeting to learn more about the program. For those unable to attend, there'll be a second virtual-only meeting on Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. For virtual access links, other meeting times, and program details, please visit hansoncommunitypower.com.
And may I just interrupt for just one brief moment? There'll also be one, I believe, at the senior center on May 9th, if I'm correct, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And then, if there's interest, there's a willingness for us to add another session.
I do hope that people do take advantage of that informational meeting. A lot of questions can be answered very easily there.
And that meeting last night was recorded. I don't know when it will be on Whitman Hanson Community Access Television, but I dialed in and a lot of great questions, all the burning questions just about were asked and answered, so be a great resource.
Did people attend that?
Yeah, people physically attended, and there were about 35 people that virtually attended, so, yep.
Okay. Please join Green Hanson for the 2024 Cleanup Green up on Saturday, April 27th, 2024, 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the Nathaniel Thomas Mill, 583 Liberty Street. Sign up at the Thomas Mill from 9:00 to 9:30, and then come back to the Mill at 11:30 a.m. for a pizza party provided by Josh Cutler. Come prepared with gloves, boots, long sleeves, and bright-colored shirts, pants. For more information, visit Green Hanson on Facebook or contact directly at greenhanson@gmail.com. A reminder to all Town of Hanson residents, fourth quarter fiscal year 2024 real estate and personal property taxes are due on Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. To make paying taxes more convenient, the Town of Hanson offers the option to pay your taxes online at www.hanson-ma.gov. If payments are mailed, please address to Town of Hanson Treasure Collector's Office, 542 Liberty Street, Hanson, Mass., 02341. Whitman and Hanson Dollars for Scholars will hold a Spring Electronic Recycling Day at the Indian Head School in Hanson on Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Residents and non-residents can dispose of their unwanted electrical items which they may not be able to do away with by conventional trash methods. Okay. A fee will be assessed which will support DFS's scholarship award program. For more information on pricing, please contact Mike at 781-252-9683 or visit www.witmanandhanson.dollarsforscholars.org. So, I'm going to make a point that this is not mentioned in the announcements.
Okay. But you're going to improv for us.
I'm going to improv this. The American Legion is hosting a Kentucky Derby Party. Join us for an afternoon filled with racing excitement, raffles, and contests to benefit Canines for Warriors in their efforts to prevent veteran suicide, Saturday, May 4th, beginning at 3:00 p.m. Hanson American Legion, 92 Robinson Street, Hanson. All proceeds to benefit Canines for Warriors. Tickets are $25 on Eventbrite or available for sale at the Hanson Legion. I'm not going to read this link. We need to put that up on the website. This has been posted on the town groups, too, right?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Well, okay. We'll have to get it posted on the town groups. It's on Facebook.
I think the Memorial Day thing, I think Lynn said she put on there.
Okay. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, May 6th, 2024, Special Annual Town Meeting; Select Board, May 7th, 2024, Special Annual Town Meeting if needed; Select Board, May 14th, 2024; and Select Board, May 21st, 2024. And what isn't mentioned here is the election, May 18th, 2024.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Now, just so we can make sure that we're using our time effectively, we, of course, are going to do the meeting preview. Is that what you guys are here for, the meeting preview? No, I'm just trying to... Is that what you guys are here for, the meeting preview? Okay. All right. And were we expecting our town moderator to attend?
I hope so. We've reached out to him multiple ways.
Well, it's fine. We can, again, we're just one big improv this evening. Okay, so, Ms. Green, first up on the agenda is ARPA agreement for the ambulance.
Yes, so, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, as you remember, a few meetings back, the board voted to pursue ARPA funds for the purchase of a new ambulance. I've completed the application and submitted it. The grant agreement is required, and I will need to submit that, but the board does need to sign this. I don't believe a vote is required because the board already voted to use the ARPA money. And there is an article on town meeting warrant for it as well. So basically, I just need the board, each board member to sign this so I can submit this with the application.
All right, so have we got an official copy that needs the signature?
I have it right here.
Okay, great. Okay, annual election hours, Ms. Green.
Okay, so, I guess I'm going to read this that the town clerk gave us. Let's see. Plymouth SS, "To either of the constable of the Town of Hanson, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in town elections to vote at Precinct 1, Precinct 2, Precinct 3, at the Hanson Middle School on Saturday, the 18th of May, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the following purpose: to cast their votes in the annual town election for the following offices and question: two select board members for three years, an assessor for three years, a board of health member for three years, board of health member for one year, a cemetery commissioner for three years, a member of the planning board for five years, a member of the Hanson Housing Authority for five years, two constables for three years, two trustees of the public library for three years, a member of the Whitman Hanson Regional School District Committee, pre-K through 12 for three years, and two water commissioners for three years. Question one: Shall the Town of Hanson be allowed to assess an additional $372,141 in real estate and personal property taxes for paying the town's assessed share of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget of the Whitman Hanson Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024? Yes or no?
Okay, so, aren't we entertaining a motion for the hours, that that be placed on the ballot? Do you have a motion, mister?
I have, I have, there is a motion.
You want to make the motion?
That would be amazing.
Sounds good. Make the motion to have the voting for the May 18th Annual Town Election being held at the Hanson Middle School to begin at 10:00 a.m. and end at 5:00 p.m.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
No.
Okay, great. And we already voted to place that article for the override on the ballot, so we're good on that. I think that was, the agenda item was primarily for the hours. Okay. And, of course, I have now lost my agenda. Okay. Accept resignation from Ryan Kelly of the Police Department, Ms. Green.
So, actually, Ryan Kelly was Highway Department?
Oh, thank you, sorry. I jumped the gun. We've got a police person, too.
He was one of our heavy equipment operators. He left, he was with the Town of Hanson for about three years, and he left to take a job with a previous employer.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Ryan Kelly from the Highway Department.
So moved with regret.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Ms. Green, that brings us to the resignation of Jared Meegan of the Police Department.
Yes, and Jared Meegan was a sergeant with the Hanson Police Department for many years. Again, he leaves us to join the police force of another municipality.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Jared Meegan of the Police Department.
So moved again with regret.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Amazing, okay. Appoint Tom McSweeney as an election worker, Ms. Green.
So, Tom McSweeney, his name was presented to us by the Democratic Committee, correct? By the Democratic Committee. It's customary for the board to appoint the election worker. From here, we will turn it over to the town clerk.
And what is the period of his appointment?
I don't really, she did not give me that. I think it's the June 30th, June 30th?
Of 2024?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We can, we will make that motion. If you subsequently figure out that it is a different date, then just circle back with us, and we will amend that.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, we're chugging along here. Open committee positions and reappointments discussion. I just want to get a sanity check from the board. We've had, in the past, a couple of folks that either we chose not to reappoint to the ZBA, or we chose to remove from the ZBA, seeking to be appointed to the ZBA. Is it the will of the board to entertain those applications? I know previously when we had discussed it, it was an individual who had been removed from the ZBA after a hearing, and we had unanimously voted that we did not want to exhume that body, go through that whole process again, because we had already made a decision. Is that the same feeling for people that we voted not to reappoint that were part of that investigation? What is...
My mind hasn't changed.
Okay, so, we're saying we're not putting that band back together.
Right.
Okay. Does anybody feel differently?
No, I think...
I don't think we need a vote, but I just wanted to kind of, just get the sense so that if we've got an application which, you know...
No, I think it makes sense every time there's a new board to circle back to this, because the will of a previous board might not be the will of a current board. So I think as long as, you know, there's a status check every once in a while, I think that's the fairest way to do it.
Okay, all right, so, that's one more item off the agenda. Okay, great. Okay, that brings us to Camp Kewahney Commission, and we've got a request to approve, a request from Aaron Peterson for a discount for the 8th grade dance on June 13th, 2024. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
And second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
No.
Fantastic. And approve the request from Hanson Public Library for a discount for trivia fundraisers on Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And they voted to approve a $25 per hour fee totaling $125. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further... Oh, yes, yes.
So, we did a $25 fee for the American...
Yes, but they didn't put a total there, so I...
Yeah, it was $125.
Okay, all right. So, okay, your point, you're being consistent here, it's not willy-nilly, yeah.
Yeah, usually when we do it, just for the board's information, when we do a discount rate for a nonprofit or anybody, we just charge them the rate of caretaker.
Okay.
So it's always $25 now.
Okay, I think that's a great policy, because it's a nonprofit, but we can't really lose money, nor can we subsidize a nonprofit with public funds. So it's a, it's a good balance that you've struck there, Mr. Mulcey, in my estimation. Okay, but ADD sets in, and so had we taken a motion and a second?
Yeah, and second, yeah.
Okay, great. All in favor? All right, fantastic. And then approve raising linen costs as follows: round tables from $10 to $12, and banquet tables from $12 to $15. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Fantastic. Accept the following donations, and I'm just going to rattle them off here: $1,225 to the Fire Department, $332 to the Police Department, $5,000 to the Bonny House, $135 to, I assume that's Conservation Commission, Ms. McDowell, okay, $25 to the 200th Anniversary. Does that even still exist anymore since it happened three years ago? I thought, no, I'm not even, I'm not being facetious, I know I ordinarily am, but I actually thought that they needed to close that out to some extent, so I wasn't sure that they were taking...
I think they were planning on closing it out four-year round, so this might, this is probably all linked in.
Okay, all right.
These are from January, so it probably was from January.
$100 to the Dear Gift Account, $75 for Fire Department gifts. I will entertain a motion to accept those donations with gratitude to all of the folks that donated.
So moved.
And second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
No.
Fantastic. And Kurt is here, like, right on the... Were you out there listening to us? Because we just got to highway, and if so, my condolences, we just got to highway road opening permit application modifications discussion. We literally just got to that. So, if you don't mind stating your name, we know who you are, but, yep.
McLean, the interim highway director.
Okay, great. And did you want to take our inquisition seat up here? Where were you on the night of the 5th seat? You know? I joke, but it's actually, I don't know. I don't know if it's a better setup or a worse setup than we used to have, but it is what it is. Okay, so, Ms. Green, who wanted to lead this conversation with us about the highway road opening permit application modifications discussion?
I can provide an introduction.
Okay.
So, we have had a road opening permit on file for many years. I actually have never seen the permit until Mr. McLean came in.
Can you explain what that is? Like, let's take it down to the most fundamental...
Sure. So, a road opening permit is what companies who are going to be opening any road in the Town of Hanson must file and apply for with the Hanson Highway Department. There is a fee attached to that and some requirements for the company that opens up the road, mainly utility companies who do utility work.
And that basically says thou shalt not mar or ruin our roads, and if you do, it's at your own cost, and you'll put it back in the same condition that you found it?
Kind of, sort of.
Okay, all right.
That's why Mr. McLean is here. After reviewing it, when he came on board as our interim highway director, he realized that there are quite a few improvements that could be made that would better serve the town and be a better watchdog for the town to make sure that companies do put the roads back in the condition that they found them or make them better. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. McLean to speak up.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, Mr. McLean, I have to say, I've noticed some of the utilities are, I'll say, inconsistent and perhaps not as judicious as we'd like them to be about sealing things back up after they've torn everything up. So we'd love to hear from you.
Well, what this permit here does, we, when I was here in 1920, we used actually the cover page there from what I brought then. Now the conditions, as you'll see, are conditions that we've had recently were just a page and a half.
Yeah.
Well, now you'll see there's probably eight or nine pages.
Yeah, it's a lot of pages, huh?
And the big thing is, whenever anybody, if they, if you're building a house, you're going to put a driveway in, you have to open the curb, and that's a road opening permit. This here, it really holds, I don't want to say any specific company, but it holds them to the gun that when they're done, they will restore the road full width and basically come in and mill the road an inch and a half, and then do full width paving, inch and a half on their whole...
And who checks them on that?
Would be the highway director.
Okay, all right.
We're dealing with an issue right now where the gas company has paid us some money or willing to pay us money. That's fine, but moving forward, you don't want to be receiving checks from the gas company for that. We can hold them with this road opening permit, a local community that abuts us, does it, and it works very well, so. It just, it keeps our roads, if you look at East Washington Street, it's kind of a disaster area.
Yes, it is.
Understandably, they did a lot of work, but now we have to go in and do a full refurbishment of the whole road. The gas company's putting money up for that. Is it enough? No.
That's what I was going to ask you, like, how do we really, you know, because you know better than I do, but I mean, prices for a lot of those materials can fluctuate wildly depending upon the season and demand and everything else, and plus, like, I just don't like, I don't like us being in a position of playing catch-up, trying to figure out if it's going to be enough money, and then trying to go to them and try to get more money.
Well, they sent us what they would pay, and they use a formula every single day what I would use.
Yeah.
This here will prevent that in the future. It'll be, when they're done, they have to restore the road, and if it's just one lane that they did, they have to restore the whole width.
Okay.
When they're tearing up the roads, and, like I say, one of the budding communities that works fine for them, and then in a case, if we're going to be doing that, they want to do West Washington Street now, and they have like 2,800 feet they want to do. So that's why I wanted to rush this through, so when I sign their permit for that, this is the conditions they'll have moving forward. If the selectmen approve that, it'll just sign it, and it'll check right to the gas company.
Yeah, go for it.
They were tasked with fixing the roads themselves before this. We were dependent, we were expected to do it with, whatever they give us for money?
Well, no, see, when they do a job, they have to go out in like they did on East Washington Street. They patched it, it isn't dirt anymore. They use hardtop.
Well, that's about it. It's just not dirt.
Correct. They used hardtop. This is, they have to restore that. Is it what we want? When they first do it, it might be all right, but after it settles and everything, it's not quite where you want it to be. So, this permit here will just, anybody that digs in the road has to...
And legal's gone over this?
I don't know if legal has.
We have not had our legal book added.
All right, well, I mean, before we implemented, I think it would be prudent for us to have our legal folks take a gander at it. Did anybody have any questions? I applaud you for this initiative. This is why we love you so much. And why we keep calling you back, Kurt. We've had...
Three strikes, you're out there.
You said that the last time, Kurt. So, I mean, this is fantastic, and thank you so much for taking the initiative to point out that this is something we could do better. I think it's wonderful. Did anybody have any questions? Mr. Weeks, you look like you've got a burning question.
Just a couple of clarifying questions, I guess. So, I echo everything that Laura's saying. I think this is great, love it. Have we checked to make sure it's just internally consistent, just to piggyback off of legal looking at this and making sure it's stuff that we can actually enforce? But is it, have we gone through this with a fine-tooth comb to make sure there's no contradictions within the language that already exists? So...
Well, basically, we adopted the whole set of conditions from the next hour.
Okay, and we're trusting that they've gone through the process of making sure that all that's...
Right, and I mean, this has been in place for several years. It was in place when I was in Yanville.
Okay.
And it's been fine-tuned over the years to keep protecting the municipalities.
Okay, so I would just add for the sake of it, because we've been in situations before where we've put something in in good faith and then found out that there's some type of law embedded in something that contradicts some type of bylaw that we have and then causes some other thing. So I just want to focus on that a little bit. And then, just from a layman's perspective, because I was on the planning board for a while, and a lot of the times, it's just about how do you hold people's feet to the fire? Because I've been in so many situations where we thought we had enough money when someone's doing something, and then come to find out they, they could just leave, and then it's cost us more money to chase them for the money than it is to just have a road that's caving in on itself. So what types of safeguards are in here to protect, you know, the citizens?
Well, they have to restore, they have to restore the road.
But they have to apply and tell a permit.
Right, they have to apply for the permit, they give us, you know, like, I'll just use West Washington, for example. They have 2,800 feet, they don't want to put new main in.
Yeah.
So, this year, when they're done, if they, if we left it the way things are, it'd look like East Washington Street when they were done.
Right, right.
Now, it's going to be shiny black, the whole width, the whole trench.
And you're, because I only know this as a volunteer, you're the expert, that's the only reason why I'm asking, because I genuinely don't know the details to the level that you do. There are guarantees in place in an agreement like this with a permit like this where it has to be that way. They can't just...
Do what they want, no.
Or go bankrupt halfway through the process, and we can't...
Hopefully, the company that we'll be dealing with there wouldn't be going bankrupt.
But I also noticed that they are making, they're going to have insurance where they have to name us, the certificate holder, blah, blah, blah. So there's enough checks and balances in this that I think it's definitely an improvement.
No, it's improved. I'm not, just, I'm not saying that the questions negate the pros that this brings. I'm just, as someone that's kind of been through, we've been burned a couple of times through the planning, through developments and things like that, that we're still kind of paying the price for, so I've just kind of learned through the hard way to ask some of these questions.
I was dealing with some of those issues.
I know you, I honestly, I know.
One of the roads and...
So, $300,000 in liability insurance, is that what the other town has? Is that, okay, all right.
Yeah, and then it goes back to the same thing with, when it comes to Camp Kewahney, when they're doing their filming and they have to, like, break everything down and put it back to the way it was. I feel a lot more comfortable if someone internally is the one that's signing off on it, not someone saying, well, there was gravel there before, I'm going to dump gravel there now, we're done. I want whatever the replacement is to go back to normal, to have the life that we expect it to have, and not just to say we put a patch on it and now it's back to normal.
Right. With this, it'll be a highway director that is going to oversee the signing of the permit, go out and look at the job, and then should be in contact with them throughout the whole process, saying this is what's going to be done, and the best thing you can do is say, did you read your permit?
Yeah.
Because everything is in the permit there.
Okay. As long as we're the final say, because I want to be able to say internally, because I've been, done this in the planning board in the past before, where we've had somebody sign off saying, this job is done, and then we've literally gone there, opened up the sewer cap, and saw that the thing was caving in on itself, and it's like, well, you signed off on it, it's like, well, doesn't mean it's done right, and we made them tear things up and rebuild it. I just want to make sure that those protections are there and not lost in here.
No, and definitely there, like I state, the highway director will be the one to
So that person...
Hold them to the gun on this here.
Okay.
And say, this is what your, this is what your permit says, this is what you will do.
Okay.
And if they don't abide by it, good luck getting another road opening permit in town.
Yeah.
We just won't sign it.
Yep, that's fair.
It happened in hand over hand.
Okay, no, I appreciate that.
That's why that's the way it is now.
And so...
Thank you very much.
On the first original, there's a line at the bottom, total of fees to be doubled. That line is not on the second one. Maybe it just scrolled off the bottom, see it down the bottom, total of fees, it's not
It's not on the second one.
If I just give you a list of things to just like kind of check on this? If you mind just doing that?
Lowest, 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 yeah. Oh, is it?
If I just give her a list of things.
Yeah, that's the original, but that line is on the bottom of that.
Because I've just, I've gone through the wringer a couple of times.
Oh, it's inside of it? Does it say double?
No, no, no.
No, I know.
Total of fees to be doubled if permit is after work, um, is issued after work is commenced. I just didn't know if that had been incorporated into the body of this now and that's why it wasn't on the first page anymore.
That just might be a tough one.
Just an omission.
If Mr. McLean has this word document, we can.
If, if, if the statute could work without.
The language. Then it's doubled. But is that in the, is that in the body of the new?
She's saying it's not on the bottom of the modified, but it should be, right?
Right, that could be.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to, I just saw that.
So it, that language says that the fees are doubled, which for my mind, I'd actually like to up the ante on that.
It should be more.
Honestly, because if you're coming to seek forgiveness and not permission on something like opening up our roads, I, I don't think just doubling a hundred dollar fee is very punitive at all. Um, but, you know, anyway, can, uh, can we make sure that the modified version has the penalties, uh, for, um, doing it after the fact and seeking forgiveness and not permission?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, and.
You can send us the word, that word.
It's on the, it's on, it's on the original. It just didn't make it to the modified version. That's what Ian was thinking.
That's what I was thinking, it fell off.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, okay. And, um, a question for you. Um, does this apply to, um, for instance, I can think of a very specific example. Um, up when the Spring Street project was being done, they had to open up water mains. The company itself, not, not the town. Um, the company putting in the water for that development opened up our roads and as far as I know, um, didn't pay us any permit, um, didn't seek for. Water wasn't talking to highway. I don't know what happened and I'm not, you know, getting into that.
Anytime they break the surface.
Okay, that's what I, okay. So it doesn't matter who it is?
I'm not going to tell the water department, no, we're, you know, we're together.
Obviously not water, yeah, yeah.
But if someone, a contractor's installing water mains.
A third party, okay, yeah.
They have to have a road opening permit.
All right, great. That's, that's awesome.
And then they'd fall under the same, as that, I think it's number four in the special conditions about re, uh, restoring the road to the way it should be.
Okay, all right, perfect. Um, yes, because I, I'm not sure we've been consistently enforcing, um, that. And then, then at the end of the day, it means we own fixing the road for things other people have done to it. Um, that just seems patently wrong, um, and an abuse of our taxes. Um, so, uh, yes, Mr. Hill?
You mentioned West Wa, uh, Washington Street. Um, is this a time sensitive thing? Like you need to get this done, signed sooner rather than later?
Well, yeah, I, I have time for town council to look at it.
Yeah.
Um, it is a little time sensitive because I met with the gas company the other day and they're going to be starting on the Brook Street intersection, Brooklyn Winter. And, um, they're looking at like early in May, trying to get up there. And I said, well.
Can you fast track this with legal counsel? I mean, is that, I think.
Oh, yes, absolutely. As soon as, um, we get the word document, we can make sure the language is added in on the first page and then I can, I can get it right off to town council and ask them really to look at it like as soon as possible.
All right. Did anybody have any other questions, Mr. McLean? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the modified, um, I don't know what we're calling this, um, Town of Hanson Highway Department application, um, contingent upon legal counsel reviewing and approving it.
So moved.
Set.
Any further discussion? No, all right. All in favor?
No.
All right. Thank you so much, Kurt. We really appreciate it. Um, okay, great, thanks. Um, all right, that brings us to May Annual Special Town Meeting Preview. Ms. Green.
Hi. Who can believe that our town meeting is, is just a couple of weeks away? But here we are. Now, all, the, all board members have their book, our annual special town meeting book.
Um, before we start the preview, um, and, and God knows, I want to start the preview, um, I would like to know what we are doing for a communication plan. I want to know how are you getting the word out to people? Town meeting's happening. Here's what we're talking about. We need you to be engaged. We need people to show up. What's our plan?
So we have it on Facebook. We have it on any of our social media pages. We have it on our website. We have, um, we have our boards, board ready out here. Um, well, we will have the board about town meeting. It's right by the front doors when people pop in. We'll have copies of the warrants there. We have the, I don't know, what do you call those? Sandwich boards?
Yard sale signs. Yard sale signs.
Yard sale signs, but they're large. Um, they, they're, one is going to be placed at the fire department. One is going to be placed at the library. Uh, we've got copies of the warrants with, at the library and the senior center.
Okay.
Um, it will be on the front sign here. It will be on the digital sign. Um, the schools will send out an email to the parents regarding town meeting. They will also include information on the childcare.
Great.
Um, so we, we're, I think we've covered everything.
Okay, and when are the sandwich boards going up? Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay. And I, and I know Green Hanson needs that, that electronic sign for the cleanup greenup, but I, um, it just, I ideally would like to see us getting that out there at least two weeks beforehand. So I don't, you know, I don't know what other method we could support Green Hanson with, but just let's think about that going forward. I'll be there cleaning up on Saturday. I'm sure most of these guys will too. Most of us do it every year. We're su, super supportive of it. It's not that. It's just that we really need to get the message out there. We need people showing up at town meeting.
So we can make sure Monday morning that both of those signs have town meeting on it.
Okay.
Yeah, because those, those two events happen on Saturday.
I already talked to the chief and he said he would make the change.
He'd change it. I don't know if it's prudent to have people come out on Sunday because then we've got to pay overtime. So Monday morning, we can have both those signs updated for town meeting.
And, um, are, are we able to do like the newsletter, like a newsletter? Um, I don't know, with the switch over to like Capital Strategic Solutions and all that business, I don't know if, if we've still got the updates that people can get. I know I get them about water.
Yeah.
Mostly water, actually, if I stop and think about it. It's just water that I get updates on.
We did, are we putting it in the paper, the press release in the paper?
I submitted it, yeah.
So you are going to put it in the paper?
We, we did submit it to the, to the paper. And as far as the newsletter, um, we don't really have it anymore until we can kind of regroup and, and generate it again.
Okay. All right, and, um, all right, that sounds great. Did anybody have any questions about our publicity plan? All right, let's get down to it, Ms. Green.
Okay. Um, in tab number one, we have basically your.
Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Um, we, we have basically your, um, table of contents, basically, that will tell you each article, the department that is sponsoring the article, the item, the amount, the, um, source of funding. And then if it is free cash, we have a column, the columns, we have the columns that will give you the free cash amount, reason appropriate, which is taxation, other sources. Um, again, it will, it'll, it'll say.
It's not tab one, it's before tab one.
Oh, before tab one, I guess.
It's page one, okay. And also, um, that's special first and then the annual is next.
Special is first, yes. Um, we have then, we have our recommendations, votes to place, and then we also have the finance committee recommendations.
Okay. Um, and since we've got, um, our brethren from FinCom here, and thank you very much for joining us, we appreciate it. And, um, just FYI, um, Mr. Sullivan let us know, the chair of, um, FinCom, that he couldn't be here tonight. He had a, um, conflict with work. So, um, we have got, um, Stephen Miko and Aaron Barr here and he, and Kevin says that you're totally primed and ready to answer any of those hard hitting questions that we might have for FinCom. Um, but, um, just before we kind of jump into it, were there any articles you guys wanted to call out to us as something that you found very, you know, that you, you really needed more information on or you were concerned about? I understand there'll always be, um, and this is sort of a bit of an, you know, I think there's always a necessary friction between the two groups in that you're looking through one lens, which is, you know, 100% fiscal responsibility. And not that we are not being fiscally responsible, but that we may have other compelling things that are, you know, that we're factoring in. Um, was there any particular thing that, you know, really gave you guys pause or that you had concerns about that you wanted to point out now? Or do you just want to point it out as we go along?
Well, overall, um, for the regular town meeting, we did vote to not recommend any free cash articles. Given that if the voter ride passes at town meeting, does not pass on the ballot, we could use that free cash to plug those articles, I'm sorry, to, to plug the budget and save the articles from taking free cash requests for.
Okay.
So that is why.
Makes sense.
Did not recommend.
Yeah, Mr. Sullivan had explained that to me and, and coming from the perspective that you guys are coming from, 100% understand where you're coming from. So I appreciate that, thank you. Um, any, any other color commentary before we jump into it?
The only thing that, that was a question, and I know it was, was actually a question from one of the other members, was, um, the CPC money on special town meeting, $50,000 for the housing. He was wondering whether, um, something to do with the old problem of claiming that we might be able to save us time versus spending the $50,000 through whatever means they would do. And he, he was just waiting for more information. That's why it's not recommended by us because we didn't have all the information.
Um, yeah, I, I know the answer to that question, but I can say just generally, philosophically, um, community preservation guards that money like it is their own personal money. Um, and they would not fund something if they thought there was another source for it. Um, that's anecdotal. I don't know for 100% about the OCPC, but I also believe that Mr. DeFrayis was under a time constraint, which may not have permitted him to work with OCPC, which tends to be a bit slower process to get funded. Um, he was really under a, 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 a pretty tight timeline. In fact, I think he passed the deadline but got permission to extend, um, based on the premise that he would get funding at, potentially at town meeting, so. Um, but Mr. DeFrayis actually would probably be the best person to ask and not even CPC about whether he had, um, he had asked OCPC. And since he is the representative from the town to OCPC, I tend to think he would have explored that. Uh, but again, I checked with him on that.
Right, yeah, we didn't have the information.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no worries. Um, okay, all right, Ms. Green. I know I've said it 15 times, but let's get to it.
Okay. Um, article number, uh, May Special Town Meeting. And we have our, our greetings. Uh, do, do you want me to read all of the greetings or?
Um, no, I don't think we really need the greetings. I think we, we.
Just mainly go right to the articles?
Yeah, let's just get to the meat of it.
All right. So article number one is to see if the town will vote to transfer $404.06 from free cash to pay for unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year or take any other action relative, in relation thereto. So we have, um, a legal bill from Laura Brown, who is our tax title attorney. And we have from our accounting department, Crystal Rock Primo, which was the supplier for our water in town.
Um, Ms. Green, I also want to recognize that we have our town clerk, um, Ms. Sloan here, um, Beth Sloan. Um, Beth, was there anything you wanted to say at all? Okay, all right, chime in and let us know if you have any, um, comments.
Okay. Um, so we have our, um, select board recommendations and finance committee recommendations. Um, this requires a nine tenths majority vote. Article two is to see if the town will transfer the following sums of money from the sources as specified, I, I, as specifically identified below to fund in or reimburse for the following items or take any other action relative thereto. So we have the Hanson Fire Department, uh, the ambulance, which is $448,024, which is, um, going to be, we're, have submitted an application to fund that through the ARPA. The pond management study, $85,000, again, uh, funding that through ARPA. And then Pratt Place, the culvert repair slash replacement, Again, um, we are submitting an application to fund that project through ARPA. Um, we have recommendations by our select board and our finance committee.
Um, what are we referring to here when we say line two? This will be re-appropriating the library senior center money to purchase a generator.
Oh, let's take that out, no.
Get in there.
That'll be updated.
Okay.
So we will be updating that.
Excuse me, well, can I have a question maybe with Everett? Um, ARPA from County, and line two just says ARPA. Is that two different sources or two different ARPA's?
No, yeah, yes. But great question. So, no, it is two different ARPA's. So, um, let me just explain the two different ARPA's first.
Please, yep.
After, the regular ARPA is the funds that the town has, that the town meeting actually appropriates. When it says ARPA Plymouth County, um, the town really doesn't appropriate money from Plymouth County, but Plymouth County wanted the town meeting vote as part of the application. That money's sitting at Plymouth County and they're going to disperse it directly to us. So those ARPA funds, those are Plymouth County ARPA funds. We get it from Plymouth County. So, um, that's the difference. So the $85,000 is basically town meeting previously approved money for a different ARPA project, which is going to transfer into this pond management study. And then the other two articles that say Plymouth County, no money's going to exchange hands. Plymouth County just wants to say, hey, town meeting supports us applying for this ARPA money.
Okay, and that all makes sense, but these explanations are lacking.
The other thing too is that the question, the question is going to be asked, why did they take it away? Why, why did, you know, why did they re-appropriate it from the generator that was voted on? And people need to understand that ARPA didn't approve that.
Right, that Plymouth County didn't, yeah.
Plymouth County was not, they, they wouldn't approve our application for that.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll keep that, we'll, we'll keep the, the main part of this and then we will, um, supplement this to, just to say that the original appropriation, um, was not approved by ARPA.
Yep.
So we'll add that into it.
Okay, any other questions on that, guys? All right.
Just making my note.
I mean, I, do you want me to drive a little bit, Lisa? And then I think we can just chug along here. So Article three, this is to, this is highway director for the typical private roads, grading and filling of potholes on private roads. I don't think there's any controversy. Explanation's good. Any questions on that? Nope. Okay, great. Four, this is the one that you were talking about, Mr. Amico.
Yeah.
And certainly, finance can vote to not recommend or recommend, but only community preservation can vote to place and recommend, really. I mean, we placed and recommended, but technically, community preservation, it's sort of like water, or I'm trying to think of another similar, like, they're the only ones that can really, we couldn't propose a use of community preservation funds ourselves. So other than the question that Mr. Amico had, which hopefully you guys, do you think you're going to work on getting that answer before town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. And then 6,500, Article five, 6,500 for the Pratt Place culvert. These are procurement expenses because we're going to try to pay it from, from the APRA funds. And then that's it for special?
That's, that, basically, yes, that's our special.
Okay. All right. And then we get, then we get down to annual town meeting. Let's just take the cruise down here. All right. Article one, the annual report. Hopefully no controversy on that. Where are we at with that? Has that been reviewed by you, Ms. Green? And has it gone to print yet?
So we literally just received it. So we'll be looking at it tomorrow. Literally, we just received it.
All right. Great. Article two, treasure collector. This was a great idea by Lisa Clark, to use credit cards instead of debit cards. Okay. Then town clerk salary, no controversy there. Mr. DeFrayis, we would love to hear from you. We have a burning question about, and if you can just introduce who you are so that people can connect the dots on that.
Tony DeFrayis, Hanson Town Planner.
Yes.
So I just wanted to give you some information regarding the housing production.
Yes.
As to where this article is coming from. So Hanson has a housing production plan that was created in 2019. It's a five-year shelf life. So 2019, five years, May of 2024, it will expire.
Okay.
So I, I am going to pursue some funding through the One Stop program, but that is not guaranteed. The housing production plan is a valuable tool for Hanson as far as their affordable housing goals. And then also having a housing production plan assists in getting some grants. I believe like mass, as housing in mass works.
Right. Their grants we can't apply for unless we have a valid housing production plan. Yeah.
So I pursued two avenues. One is the One Stop, which is not guaranteed. And then I have to have these conversations with the community preservation committee, that they were the ones who funded the last.
Yes, they were.
Housing production plan. So being under the gun of trying to get it, trying to hopefully keep us in compliance, and I'm going to use the term compliance in air quotes, with a housing product, a valid housing production plan, I approached them for funding. So I was able to obtain four quotes total, and they vary quite differently in costs. And it comes down to the basics, seems to all match of the tasks, but there's, it's kind of like buying the car. You get the base model, and then they're adding this, that, and the other thing. So that, I did that through the special town meeting because I, you know, funding would be immediate versus waiting until July. So I'm just trying to, so then I could kick it off immediately. And hopefully that would at least, if we applied for grants, it'd be known that, yes, it's expired, but we're in process versus it's expired, you know, sort of thing.
And you'd have, you'd have the proof of a town meeting vote saying that we would fund it. May I suggest very strongly, I know there is a parenthetical here, unused funds will be returned, community preservation committee fund. I'm actually not sure that that should be in the article, like, in the article itself. I think it should be in the explanation. I'm just one gal, though. You may want to, but other people are saying that they think that may be true, too. I think perhaps just expanding a little bit on that explanation and articulating what Mr. DeFrayis said, which was that, you know, please note that to the extent possible, we will seek other funding sources, and that essentially, community preservation will be the last, you know, kind of the last stop if we can't, if we can't get that funding from anybody else.
Yes, that's exactly it. So if we, if we receive a One Stop grant that covers the entire cost of the housing production plan, then the, that money would not be needed from the community preservation committee.
Okay. So could we ask, Ms. Green, it is a community preservation article, so really you ought not to be making changes to it without talking to the community preservation committee, but I'm sure they'll, you know, be bullish about it. I don't think there'll be a problem. But could you guys work together to tweak the explanation on that and pull the parenthetical out?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. That, and you can check that off your things to do list, Mr. Amico.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we're getting things done here. All right. Back to annual town meeting. And we were, where were we? Three. Yeah, we were at three. Town clerk's salary. Any questions on that? Okay. Article four, this is just the revolving accounts. Is there anything crazy that we should know about on this? Looks pretty standard.
Pretty, very standard. There is no, no modifications or anything that.
I mean, I do want to emphasize, this isn't the first time the board's read through these, but, you know, so if I seem glib about it, you know, we've, we've seen these a few times. Okay. Article five, again, this is typical conservation fund, all of that, Title V special fund. And then we've got the operating budgets. Is there anything that you wanted to point out on that, Ms. Green?
No. The, the budget that is in here reflects all, as far as I understand, all of the most up-to-date, these are the numbers. Then you'll see that they, we have our department request column, we have our select board, town ministry recommending column, we have our finance committee with override recommending column, and then we have the finance committee without override recommending column. And then we have the funding sources at the end. So like, unless there's been some last-minute changes, which we, if there are any last-minute changes, they will be reflected in the informational warrant.
Mr. Kintcher.
Okay. I just wanted to make a point. So this budget spent $794,000 free cash to the operating budget. So with that said, I know if the special town meeting spends additional money, free cash for the operating budget, I just want to make it clear that without an override next year, you'll be cutting budgets, and I can't see, do see staff, that, I just can't put it in the other way. So I guess start thinking about that. So we've got a year, because people ask me, how are we doing? Yeah, we're good for next year, so you could tell June 30, 2025.
Right.
But I just, I just want to just make that, just make that clear.
No, I mean, I think that's an excellent point. We'll, once again, eke by this year, but the cliff is just getting steeper and steeper. And we all know, you know, that Madden has suggested a massive $5 million override. Probably this board really didn't seem bullish on that particular approach. But we recognize that we do need an override to right, right the ship, and we'll talk about what that dollar amount is.
Just to be quick, like, so the trend is like, I think last year we used like $30,000 as the mother fund. So this year, it's like $800,000. I don't know what's going to be in the special. So now that's why we, you can see where we're going.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kintcher. Okay, Ms. Green. So that brings us to Article six, which is the override. And I personally feel as though, I've discussed this to death. Did anybody have anything else they wanted to say about it? Okay. Well, okay, I just have one thing. One thing that I've noticed that people keep saying is the select board needs to get the school committee to come down on their assessment. And I just want to be clear, we are elected to the select board. We are not elected to the school committee. If you've got concerns about the assessment that the school committee has presented to the town, then you need to speak to the school committee. Because we are not elected to be on the school committee. We work with them. We, our, our job is, once we're presented with that assessment, and we certainly have pled our case and said, look, we really can only afford 5%. You know, this is the situation we're in. And I think Whitman's done the same thing. And in all honesty, I think the school committee appreciates where we're coming from. But, you know, they voted the assessment that they voted. So I think if people have got concerns about the school budget and the school assessment, those concerns need to be properly voiced with the school committee. Our job is to find the funding for the assessment we're presented with. And so that's why we've got the override. And that's, yes, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just looking at it, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing that it's a, it looks, if you just look at the article, it looks like the 372,000 is above the 2.5% from Proposition 2.5. It's, it's above 5%. So we are, you know, we are allowing them to go up 5%. And the 5% isn't mentioned at all as far as.
No, I think the 5% probably would confuse a lot of people. But the 2.5%, she, we're referring to the chat, the mass general law and the 2.5. 2.5 is being referred to because that's the general law, is you can't go above 2.5 without the override. So I get where you're coming from on it. I, I'm not sure what we, I mean, I'm not sure what we could put in the expla, you know, we could say.
Doesn't make sense to the.
You can make, put it in the explanation.
You have to.
Yeah, we could put it in the explanation and say, you know, the town of Hanson had expressed that we were able to deal with an assessment that was increased by 5%. We were presented with an increase of 7.68 or whatever the exact percentage is. And as a result, you know, we are, we are proposing, you know, this override. I don't know. I'm totally like paraphrasing, but basically that's, I think less is more. But fair point, Mr. Hill. And thank you for bringing it up. Did anybody have any other? Okay. We've, this little nag is going off to the glue factory. All right. So do we need a vote on that, Ms. Green? Or, I mean, I think it's, we've already voted to, you know, place and recommend and every other thing we could do. So we're just asking you to tweak the explanation.
If it's just the explanation, then I don't believe we need another vote.
Okay. All right. Article seven, and this is capital improvement. Anything, Mr. Malisi, Mr. Weeks, Mr. Hill, all of the capital improvement, anything anybody wants to say to us about this or?
This is just the matrix.
Yep.
It's usually printed outside of the warrant, but inside the warrant, it's 25. Some of the dates here, some people might ask why the dates are in like 2018, 2019, 2020.
Yep.
Things like that. That's just because that's what the original article was, what the original item was proposed to us. There is some new items on here that might have older dates, but we can both change those to capital. We'll get that fixed for our town meeting.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, I think, again, I don't mean to like keep saying you need to tweak the explanation, but I think people need to understand we can't vote to fund a capital improvement item that isn't on the matrix. So I think that that's an important distinction to make, and that we should explain that. That's why we have it here.
It also should be explained that we're not funding the things that are on this page.
Yes.
Because typically, this is an outside handout. It's not included in the warrant itself.
Yep.
So I don't want people to get confused thinking that we're spending, you know, $80 million in a couple of weeks, you know?
Yep. Yes.
Is it possible to have an article and tell me that you don't vote on it? They won't be accepting it? I, I just, when, when they go up there, somebody asks questions about the matrix, I don't need to answer it as the chair, but people are voting just to accept this?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
It's just a formality.
Okay. So I just want, like Joe said, usually it's outside of the article, and there's kind of a, is this an explanation?
But the vote's still the same.
Yeah.
You're voting to accept the, even though the information's being provided elsewhere. So hopefully it won't, people won't get crazy about it because it's in here, but I don't, I don't know.
There's always the dark horse controversial one. So the most we can do.
Now that I've just said, I hope this isn't what people get crazy about.
This will be. When we ask the Department of Health to submit an item for capital improvement, that's what we ask them where they want it on the matrix. And if they say it's going to be funded in fiscal.
I don't think so.
2026, or then that's where we put it. If it's not funded.
That wasn't here.
And I assume that we are using the procedure at this town meeting that we've used really since COVID, where our town moderator is the one reading all of these articles?
I believe so.
Okay.
I haven't heard from Moderator Keely, so I would gather that he would prefer the same.
Okay. That said, Mr. Malisi, my unsolicited two cents worth, because it is a little bit different than what we've done, you may want to just get right up there and just, and tell Sean, look, I'm, when it gets to this, I'm going to just get up and explain, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what you have to say.
Okay. Mr. Hill?
It, it mentions that we, we placed it and voted 4 to 0. Sorry, it wasn't here that, but did we recommend or did we, did we not at all?
No, we didn't recommend because we thought it's the capital improvement committee has already done their due diligence, and it seemed a little bit like a slap in the face.
It's not a typo. We purposely didn't recommend. Okay.
I have a question. Would you prefer I pull that information out and do a separate handout? Do you think that'll make it cleaner and easier for people to understand?
I think it would probably make the town meeting article easier, just because that's usually what makes it usually happen.
I agree.
It would, it would limit debates.
Make it short.
Okay.
It would limit a debate, but also, I think in the explanation, if it goes this route, to make it clear that this is, there's no financial obligation for this article.
If you like, I can send that to you tomorrow.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you for collaborating on that. And Article eight, wage and personnel, anything crazy that you need to point out to us, Ms. Green? Any changes? Anything compelling?
There have not been any changes to this since we presented it to the board prior.
Okay. Nine, community preservation, these are required amounts. They, they have to, this has to be voted in every year for their budget to be allocated, 1010, 1010, 1070, and then their administrative fees. And then here we go, capital improvement. These are the items that are being recommended. And I think, again, yeah, we voted to place and recommend. Now, FinCom, again, because it's a free cash, but, so line, item one, which was coming from ambulance fund, it's not coming from free cash. They voted to recommend. And then the other items, because they're from free cash, they voted not to recommend, which is understandable. And if you look at it, it's $311,000 worth of, you know, so I think what, what Ms. Barr mentioned is kind of where they're at. All right, town of Hanson, this is the late, late tax fee, which we all discussed. And then we've got the changing the capital improvement items from $35,000 to $20,000 to increase transparency. So people have got a little bit more visibility into what we're spending money on by lowering that number. A greater number of items will be caught in the net. And then we've got good old Camp Wani budget. And I think that's self-explanatory. Let me just see anything controversial. No. 14, yeah, this was the posting of agendas and minutes on the website. Because honestly, it's ridiculous that we expect citizens to come to a portico down in the town hall to look to see when a meeting is posted. And I'm, I'm disappointed that we have to actually have an article in a town meeting warrant to get people to do the right thing, to share information with people. And we're complaining that we don't have people that are engaged, or that they're not showing up at meetings, and yet we're not doing anything to help people get the information they need. So that's my stump speech on that, and I will move on and get off of my soapbox. But I'm curious, who voted against that? Mr. Amico, I hope it wasn't you on FinCom. Huh? Okay. All right. Ms. Barr? Okay. All right. Process of elimination, guys. We can figure out. There's only five of you, so. All right. And then fire chief, $16,500 from ambulance for three laptops. Good on that. Blankets and electric blankets and plugs. Good on that. 17. MBTA community. Well, let's talk about that, shall we? So where are we at with preparedness for this article?
So Town Planner, Tony DeFrayis, will be at town meeting to answer questions. We can, what we can do is we can print out the questions, the Q and A that was released by the state on this.
Which was pretty thorough and pretty good.
Yes, it is. I was going to, I was going to talk about this in my town administration report, but Town Planner DeFrayis and myself sat down with Kevin Tocchi, who does a show on municipal focus. And we, we discussed the warrant, we talked about the override, but we did spend some time on the MBTA communities article. And we did try to get the information out there for those folks through Tony, talking about what this law requires us to do, what we stand to lose if, if this was not adopted, you know, and again, encouraged folks to reach out to us for, for questions.
Okay. I mean, you know, I think we've all said, it sticks in our craw, that this is being forced upon towns. That said, we are in a very dangerous position if this does not get passed. We rely so heavily on the grant money to do so much of what we've been able to do, to clean up Main Street, to fix things. I mean, the number, get consultants to do financial plans for us. I mean, the list just goes on and on and on, to buy conservation property. We're even looking at the library and all of that, not only future grants that we apply for, but anything we've recently been awarded but have not yet spent, they will claw back. They've already done that in Milton, and they're making an example of Milton, and they'll do it to us. The difference is, we're not Milton. We, Milton, we don't have the, the tax. The difference is, we're not Milton, we, Milton, we don't have the, the tax base that Milton has. We don't have the property values, we don't have the, um, commercial base, we don't have any of that. We really are relying on a lot of this grant money to keep us moving forward because we're trying to keep taxes as low as possible. We can't keep taxes as low as possible if we don't get, and, and move things forward if we're not getting grant money.
Correct.
We're going to be going backwards, um, and, and we're all working too hard to do that. So I really hope, um, that at town meeting, we are prepared with numbers of grants we have gotten in the past that we would not have gotten, grants that we have been awarded that we will get clawed back, as we know that, they've already said that. Um, and the grants that we are planning on applying for. I know Mr. DeFrayis just applied for five one-stop, um, grants and I'm pretty sure almost every single one of them, um, is one of the ones that will be clawed back. And I think honest, frankly, the state's just started. I don't like the way that they're flexing their muscles on this at all. Um, I think it's, it's leaving a bad taste in everybody's mouth. But I think the other thing that we really need to educate people on is all that said, that, that, that is being forced on us, that we're a small town, people didn't move here to be in a different town than what we, we're here, you know? Like, we want the historic perspective, we want the open space, um, we want the look and feel that we all moved here to have, not some other look and feel. Um, and we're not disputing that there's a, there's a housing crisis. Nobody's going to say otherwise. We know people can't afford to buy houses. Um, but the one thing that I really am hoping that, um, Mr. DeFrayis and the planning board can talk about is the process for choosing this area. And, you know, that, that there were hearings, we had a consultant, that, you know, like it's not willy-nilly, that there was a thought put into it and that this particular area isn't super conducive to building because of its proximity to wetlands, the fact that we do not have town sewer, and that the state does not require that we say it's easy to build on. They just have parameters that we have to meet, which is what we've done. The other thing I really want to make sure that people are clear about, because I keep seeing like weird stuff out there, like, like weird, like commentary. Where, the town of Hanson is not building on this, this zone. We're not doing anything with it. We're drawing a line around a zone and saying, this is the zone. Where we have to meet the, the criteria set by the MBTA Communities Act 3A. We're, we're following the criteria. Our town planner with a consultant has drawn that line around the area. Who, if private industry wants to do something with it, that's up to private industry. But we're not building affordable housing on that. So I just, I, again, really want to make sure that we are armed for bear at town meeting with these facts because there's, we are really fighting a battle of misinformation out there, a lot of misinformation.
Ms. Guardian, absolutely, absolutely.
So I, I think the biggest thing that we're going to need to do is to really put numbers.
Yes.
And practical, um, practical analysis on this over the past couple of years. I think that's the most important piece because, um, regardless, because we've talked about the building and the zoning to death. There's nothing more to add to that. I think the Q and A is gonna, people, they're, they're gonna know what they're gonna know. Really what it comes down to, um, aside from the building piece, which is, again, the Q and A should answer that relatively quickly. You could look at the last, you know, three months' worth of select boards meetings when we've talked about this ad nauseam. The reality is we don't have any money. We have a false sense of capital improvements because we have one-time ARPA funds, whether it's from the, the bucket that we have or the Plymouth County bucket. So people are going to see even with, uh, with some of the capital investments and some of the purchases that we're making, it's going to look like we actually have money that we really don't. It, it's a, it's a false sense of security. Next year's going to be worse, the year after that's going to be even worse. And we cannot continue to fund things off of, um, free cash. Because free cash isn't free, it's also not a smart way of doing anything. If we don't play by the rules right now, play nice in the sandbox, we won't have any, we already don't have the money to fund the operational budget. That's clear in the, in the thing that we just looked at now. We don't have the money, um, to even be sustainable in the near future, even if the override passes. So our one-time money goes away in the ARPA buckets, uh, assessments aren't going to go down anytime soon. And, um, we're not going to have any money to pay for anything. So the reality is, is that people need to know that this, by doing this, this isn't necessar, in my opinion, um, this article needs to pass because there's other ways to fight something like this that's not going to hurt us ironically in our own pocketbooks and make our taxes go through the roof. Because if we lose all these grants, that's, a lot of our grants and the work that, that you're doing, Tony and others are doing, are helping supplement and keep the tax rate low.
Mm-hmm.
If those things go away, it is all on the burden of residential taxpayers. We do not have a commercial tax base, nothing that's substantial enough to be able to withstand a blow like that. That's the piece that I think needs to be drawn, um, really, really closely. Because not a single person here likes it, not a single person here agrees with the way it's being rolled out. But the reality is, is that the financial impact of this is way far greater than I think we've had. We, because we spent a ton of time talking about the building and the development piece. We have not spent enough time, in my mind, really driving home the point that this will be a financial ruin if we don't go along with it right now and we fight this in a different way. We're going to find out the hard way, if this doesn't pass, that we're on a house of cards right now.
A hundred percent.
So I, I'm full bore with being able to fight the rollout and push back on this on, on May 7th. We can start that at that point, but this article has to pass to keep us all afloat. Otherwise, all, everything we're trying to do right now goes out the window. Forget about two or three years down the line.
I, I echo, um, and I think I did say a lot of the, you know, I, I think we're saying a lot of the same things, but I, the, the other thing that I have to say, we don't have the money to fight this. You know, like, they, they, these guys are, they're not messing around. The state is making an example of everybody. Um, and, and to some extent, I can understand why, because if they allow anybody to slack, then it's just going to be like a domino effect. Um, but you're right, it will be devastating to us. We are, we, we are an example for better or worse, we've been extremely reliant on the grants. We have gotten, uh, we've gotten our grant mojo going so, so much that like I don't even know what we'd do without this grant money. I don't even want to think about it. And you're right, we have become financially dependent upon it.
Yeah, and I don't think we spent enough time necessarily rolling that out. So I do want a handout that just really kind of zones in on that.
Yep.
It doesn't, doesn't really say much of any of that.
No, it doesn't.
What either of you said is not in the explanation. If I was just to read this and this is all I had, I'd say, no way. This is, because there's nothing that explains anything that's negative about it, that, that they're taking away. It only, you know, the documentation just shows what Tony and, and the, and the board did, which is great, but it doesn't talk about the money that comes, gets taken away. None of that at all.
Ms. Green, what are we going to be prepared to give voters when they show up at town meeting?
We, um, so we, we do have a spreadsheet put together that outlines all the grants that we've gotten. Um, we have all of the grants, we have the, I think it's 13 grants, um, that we've added to the spreadsheet. Uh, what we've also done is we've put in the applications that our town planner has submitted, um, at, I think around 2.1 million, um, in grants. So we do have that available, that we, we, we can, um, we, we can present that as a handout.
I really think we need to start getting that out there now.
We're on the website, too.
People can wrap their minds around, around what, you know, like, it's one thing in the absence of those facts to take a principled stand and say, hell no, we don't want the state dictating to us. And I a hundred percent get that, to my core, I get it. Um, but the practicality of the five of us sitting in this seat trying to get a job done while we're keeping the taxes low without that grant money, uh, like, uh, we need examples. We need that data out there for people to digest and we need it out there as soon as possible. Because giving it a town meeting is not going to be sufficient time for people to really wrap their minds around.
But, yep, we, we, like I said, we've prepared the spreadsheet and the information.
Is the spreadsheet, excuse me, is the spreadsheet easy to understand? Is it put together so that a, the typical non-office wonk can read it? It has to be, because in order to combat the myriad of disinformation posts that are all over social media, we need to get through to people that, you know, we're not doing it. We're, we're trying to just organize an area so that we meet that requirement, so we can continue to get grants. I mean, that's all we're doing. And that's bottom line, that's what they have to understand. It's not that we want them, we, we're not going to put 750 multi-unit, you know, buildings on those properties. That's not the point. The point is just to satisfy a requirement.
Exactly.
Well, we'll, we'll have Emily, um, look at it.
There's a spreadsheet that needs to be softened up a little bit.
Right, right. I, I just want it to be very understandable and I'm not denigrating those people. It's just that if they're not here listening and they don't know what we're, we're hearing.
Yeah.
It needs to be put in simple terms so that they can understand what we're, what we're saying.
Well, I think it's incredibly fear-based and there's, the, the thing is, is that when you, the casual person that really cares about this doesn't have the time, like we do, to like pour through all this stuff. So we've got to make it quick, simple.
Exactly.
I think if you had like the top 10, the top 10 questions that typically pop up the most and then like a grid that shows and explains some of this stuff and then put that on the website. Because I hear a lot about like social media and Facebook and private, I, I don't really look at it, but I, I hear enough about it that instead of the, the education seemingly happening in the comments section, which is 95% of the time completely not, false, I guess, is, but is a better word for it's just, it's just not fully understood appropriately.
Misinformed, yeah.
Misinformed, I guess.
Yep.
You could just put it, put a link to something that says, okay, instead of debating this in the, in the comments section, just go to the link, look at the stuff, here's the information right in front of you, make your own opinion on that, you know? I think that's the way to go.
Yep.
I'd like to see it ahead of time also.
I would too.
So we don't have the same debacle that we had with that zoning stuff.
Yep.
With people getting thrown pages of zoning stuff that they didn't have time to digest.
No, it was overwhelmed. And if you didn't bring your decoder ring, then you were, you were out of luck. Um, okay, yeah.
Also too, if I, if I also could add, um, not to mention the legal fees the town will have to spend to defend the town, um, once the attorney general files suit against us, which they have stated that they will. Because basically we're breaking the law and they've made it clear that they will hold towns accountable for that. Um, so, and it's not just going to be one attorney from our town council's office. Most likely, we are going to have to bring in counsel that is experienced with this. And it won't be one attorney, it will be a team. So this will cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees to defend.
So I think we need the loss of grant money and the potential of legal fees to be clear to people so that they are making an informed decision. And if they still decide they don't want it, then at least we know to our bone that we did the best we could to educate people about what would happen if this does not pass.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, again, that one's going off to the glue factory. All right, um, anything, oh, Mr. Malisi, yeah.
Just, just a piece of advice, I would let people know that, and what happens if you don't do it with that lawsuit and what you could do at a town meeting after that is, you know that you can pass it down.
It, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's tricky.
I feel like that's a May 7th thing. Because like, I, I really want to stand on this idea that what we do up until May 6th is very different than what we need to do long-term.
Yeah.
We need to solve the problem in front of us, fight the battle on May 7th, in my opinion.
But, okay, point well taken. Um, thank you for that. Um, okay, anything else, guys? Okay, great. All right, um, so we're moving on to Article 18. Um, so Article 18 is Recreation Committee to be renamed Recreation Commission. Hopefully that will not be a super controversial article, but I've now just called the universe in on ourselves and it probably will be. Um, Article 19, um, that's just by law, oh, this is the citizens petition. So that we've got more time to review it and get it in better shape if it's a citizens petition. So it's actually legally binding. Um, so no controversy on that. Article 20, get FinCom down to, um, five, I think from seven, right, what you guys, seven, yeah. So that they can actually get a quorum and get stuff done. Um, 21, uh, border processors, this is that temporary property tax deferral that they have proposed, um, for folks that, um, have a temporary hardship. Um, then we've got the Mass Public Library Construction Grant, um, kind of, you know, the, the money from ARPA. Um, so, um, and.
No, wait a minute.
What, what, wait, what?
This $150,000 isn't coming from ARPA. It's to prove to ARPA that we're serious, isn't it?
No, no. This is to prove to the Mass Library.
Right.
People that they're serious, so it's coming from ARPA.
ARPA funds to prove to Mass Library, okay.
Because they want like good faith money to say like, look, the town takes this so seriously, they're willing to put up $150,000 of somebody else's money, in this case, but, but I, I joke, but.
I got it.
Hopefully that's not going to get to the library. Um, okay, um, Article 23, um, this is the housekeeping article for that Webster billings and the kind of Squidness Error stuff that we ran into. It's a legal housekeeping item. Uh, this is the, uh, they need $50,000 more for the soccer field. Already appropriated money at a past town meeting in May of 2023, but the, the costs were higher than what they anticipated. So it's a community preservation article. Um, Article 25, uh, this is, um, this is the, the having to put a piece of property into custody, um, to offset the footprint because it's a conservation property that water took. Um, then we've got, uh, $30,000 for Conservation Commission revolving, uh, for them. And then $15,000 for the ever-present Frag Mighty at Smithy's Bar. Um, and then, um, chapter, accept Chapter 90 money, of course we will. And then chapter, and then Article 29 is the citizens petition on the NIPS. Um, have we talked to the proponents of this, um, since poor Sharon Kennedy was the first signer and absolutely did not know that, and so being the first signer, that she would be listed as the person that was proposed. And I know Sharon and I know she is such a humble and lovely lady that there's no way she would be getting up to, you know, rally about the, the NIPS. Um, is somebody else going to be representing? I think Mr. Stephen Smith, right, kind of was the originator of this. Is he going to get up at town meeting? Okay, um, that's something we're going to want to let Mr. Keely know, um, because he'll assume that it's Sharon and probably even call Sharon up, um, or, you know, because that's, that's who's, um, presenting. Um, okay, anything else on that? All right, anything, any last parting words, Ms. Green, Mr. Kent, Kentshire, Ms. Sloan, no, FinCom, okay.
The only thing that I have to say, I think that Chairman Sullivan is probably going to discuss with you, as the board, when they, when these articles that have free cash on there, to pass over if the budget, if the, the, um, the item for the override does not pass.
I think that would be prudent, um, and, um, maybe he can meet with us just prior to town meeting. But you have been a good emissary in getting that message across and I don't think that we'd fundamentally have a problem with that and it makes a lot of sense. Yeah.
We don't want to have layoffs.
No, no, no.
That's the one thing that the FinCom had discussed. We don't want people lost because of that. And we don't know what Whipman's going to do, we don't know what Hanson's going to do, we don't know if it's going to pass a town meeting.
Lot of moving parts here. You've got the ballot, you've got the town meeting, you've got both towns. We have no idea. It's, it's Russian roulette, literally, so.
I think it's safe to say we're putting people over projects when it comes to these budgets, so.
People over projects.
Yeah.
I like that mantra.
There you go, you can use it.
Sounds like a good campaign slogan, Mr. Weeks. Um, okay, great. Thank you, guys, for, uh, being part of that. All right. Um, okay, that brings us to approve open session minutes for April 9th, 2024.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Thanks, guys. We really appreciate it. Um, committee updates, Economic Development Committee did not meet this month, will be meeting next month. Um, and, um, we are looking, um, Ms. McDowell and, um, Ms. Green or Ms. McDowell, could you put on the next agenda, um, approve September 21st for Hanson Day? Uh, because the Economic Development Committee would like to have Hanson Day on, um, September 21st. And, um, similarly along those lines, uh, we need to reach out to the school district uh, to secure the Hanson Middle School grounds and/or school itself, depending, because it's going to be rain or shine. Um, and since last year, the worst thing happened and it rained and we lived and it was all fabulous. We're just going to go with it, rain or shine that day. And if we have to pull it inside, then we will.
Did you have to gym last night?
Uh, we did gym in cafeteria and a little bit in the hallway, so, but basically just like I want free run of the place.
It was awful that day too, wasn't it?
Yeah, because I, it's going to be off the hook this year, because the Hanson Business Network is. is geared up to, like, we are pumped to get even more people, and then the Economic Development Committee is going to get even more people. So we're going to jam the place with businesses and organizations and everything, and when we build it, they will come. So we'll be good. All right. High Street Park Committee, what say you, Mr. Weeks?
The only thing that we, that we're waiting on is Tony still needs a letter from, from this board saying that.
Can we vote on that?
We voted on it, yeah, but he, he still doesn't have the physical letter, so he doesn't, he hasn't proposed it to the planning board yet.
Okay.
So as, the minute he gets that, they can move forward.
Okay. I, okay. You know, I thought they were, they had, the planning board had some discussion, and there was definitely a weird disconnect on this, because Mr. Campbell, who's the chair of the planning board, said, why do you guys want us to have a hearing about High Street? I said, we don't want you to have a hearing about High Street, we wanted you to just kick the tires on the plans and tell us if you thought there was anything weird that, you know, like anything that, like pitfalls for the unwary, that like we wouldn't have known about, or the High Street Park Committee people wouldn't have known about. So can we get a letter to them, just being very clear, that we're just looking for their esteemed opinion, we're not looking for them to have a hearing, because that would really set us back, actually, and there's no need, there's no requirement.
No, it's really just for, I mean, this is all per Tony's request. He wants to be able to present it to the planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's it. And he, he does, he just doesn't feel comfortable doing it without something in writing saying that he has our blessing to do it.
I understand.
It's really just as simple as that.
And we had already voted on this at a prior meeting. I know you've got, ladies have had a few other things going on with preparing for town meeting, but if you don't mind queuing that up, that would be amazing.
That's all, but that, that's everything.
Okay, that's, I think that's enough. Anything?
Highway is meeting on Thursday.
Well, that is wildly exciting.
Is it this Thursday, this Thursday, right?
It's this Thursday.
And 10:00 AM.
Oh, and is Mr. McLean going to be part of that meeting?
I would hope so.
I would hope so, as the highway director.
That, that sounds amazing. Okay, great. McQuan Property Reuse, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're going to put a pin in that, we're going to revisit it after town meeting, and we're going to have a public forum, because I think enough time has elapsed that it's time for us to revisit more holistically with the whole town and have a forum, what do you want this to be? What, what do we envision this property being? It's a critical piece of property, and we want to make sure we've got as much input as possible. Recreation Committee, we don't have much to say about that, except it will be renamed to the commission. Women Hanson Regional School Agreement, nothing happening on that, because we haven't had any meetings. So that brings us to the Town Administrator Report, Ms. Green.
So a couple, a couple of my report items were talked about earlier. I was just going to mention the, I attended the Hanson Power Committee, Community Power Questions and Answers presentation that occurred last night at the police station. It was very well attended, it was standing room only.
How many people were there physically? I joined virtually, but how many people were there physically?
I, I couldn't tell you.
Oh, Mr. Hill?
There were 36 seats, and I know people are on the outside, so somewhere between 40 and 50.
Okay, all right. And I mean, I thought it sounded like a very productive dialogue, and I thought people did a great job of fielding the questions. What was the impression of the folks that were there physically?
Everybody that I was near came with a lot of questions and left with none. Basically, everything was answered, everybody was happy with, with the presentation, and definitely understood their options, and I, as well as others, don't like the idea of being pushed into something without having to opt in, it's an opt-out type thing, but they, everybody understood the reason behind it.
Yeah.
So it went very, very positively.
That's awesome. Yeah. And there'll be another one, so, like I said, I think before the meeting started, there'll be a replay on cable of
It's already active.
Oh, oh, great. Wow, that was speedy. And then there'll be another meeting on May 2nd, and another on May 9th, and I had been communicating with Mary Ann saying, you know, that this session kind of came up a little sudden with people, Mary Ann DiMascio was the chair of the Energy Committee, and I said, you know, do you think you might be able to oblige and have like just one more session? The deadline for people to opt out is May 18th. So I know people were panicking, thinking it was April 18th, in which case the boat would have already sailed, but, but it's May 18th. And, and again, if you have National Grid as your provider, you should get a letter or postcard. If you have made provisions through a third-party provider, you will not be automatically opted in. You will need to, if you decide you want to participate, look at your contract, see if you have a cancellation fee, make that determination, do a little soul searching, figure out if you want to cancel your contract, and in, in any event, if you are then free and clear, you may opt in, affirmatively opt in. Some of the other questions were, if I've got solar, is that going to affect it? If I've got a generator, will I affect, will it affect it? No. Who's going to respond in outages? It's National Grid, that's who you're getting your power from now, it's who you will continue to getting your power from. It's being bundled in a different way, but that's still the power provider.
Well, it's delivery. National Grid delivers it, and that doesn't change. It's just the supply that changes.
So, so, and yes, Mr. Hill, you have been very clear from the outset, and I think we all felt queasy about the opt-in, honestly. I don't like anybody telling me what to do, really. And especially with, with my own, like, personal, you know, like, it feels very, like, close to home when you're talking about my utilities at my house and you're opting me in, and so, but I did think they did a good job of explaining why. And, and so there's a lot of information out there, and I think we just need to keep doing full-court press on that. And, you know, and I have to say kudos to Mr. Armstrong and Mrs. DiMascio for getting that information out there and being very, you know, very engaging on social media and at that event, and really just generally accessible. And Patrick White was quite lovely, as usual, on that session. So, you know, let's just keep that information flowing out there, and whenever we get a new piece, pop it out there and let people know. And are we putting anything in the paper about that? Is that part of our communication plan?
I believe Good Energy is putting something. We were not tasked with putting something in the newspaper about it. But they, they are open to putting on another meeting, so we'll wait to hear from the Energy Committee, Mary Ann DiMascio, to see if they've, they've coordinated another meeting, so we'll
Yeah, I think if they're going to do it, it needs to be kind of sooner rather than later, because, you know, if you wait, like, I know that one at the scene you said it's going to be the 9th, but I mean, the deadline's the 18th, and if you're not particularly, like, you know, computer savvy, or, you can call, so there is that, just an FYI for anybody that isn't particularly savvy, you can call, but just, you know, that lead time, I wish we could get something in the next week, maybe another one, but we'll defer to those guys and see what they can pull off.
Good meeting Monday.
Okay.
So hopefully, they'll come up with something. We're meeting Monday.
Yeah. I was going to say, aren't you on that? Can't I make a bid through you to the Energy Committee? Okay, great.
One thing that was mentioned a few times that was a little bit of confusion is, is how much is the town making on this?
People did seem to think it was, you know, which actually was a genius idea. I was like, damn, you know, would it be legal for us to make money off of utilities? We definitely need revenue streams. But I was like, yeah, a couple of people asked, how is the town making money off of this? And the answer is, no, we are not. But Ms. DiMascio made a great point. We have been, as a town, participating in a similar arrangement for our own municipal power for years, and so have many other towns. So this isn't a new, novel thing. In fact, when I looked at the legislation, it was passed in 1997, because Mr. Young was asking who the legislator was who signed on this, and I said, I really would have no way of knowing, Mr. Young, because it was 1997, I don't know who it was at that time. So more on that later, but, okay, carry on, Ms. Green.
So the town, we have been invited to participate in a cyber program assessment and improvement plan that is being coordinated through the Plymouth County Commissioner's Office. There is no fee charged to the town for this. It's an assessment that's going to be conducted by the Center for Internet Security. They will assess the town's overall cybersecurity strength, and will provide comprehensive, actionable items to address weaknesses. So we do want to thank Plymouth County Commissioners for putting this program together and offering it to the towns. It's a great benefit, and there's no cost to the town.
Now, I think when Ian and Ed and I attended the Plymouth Commissioners, they mentioned that, and it did sound intriguing. But after they do that initial assessment, isn't there a possibility of a program that we might sign up for if we want to? We're not obligated or anything, but like, there's, there's more to that.
There is more.
Isn't there, like, they'll match, like, we have to pay 50%, and then they pay 50%? There's some type of a formula?
I haven't heard the specifics yet, but I heard that, that something is in the works.
Okay, well, that sounds great.
Once this takes place. So this is phase one, but, you know, it's, it's excellent for the town.
Awesome.
And then I was just going to talk a little bit about the Hanson Community Power, the letters were sent out. Town hall departments, we have been receiving calls, so all the departments have the documentation that they can refer to if they happen to get a call, to provide information. And all, you know, and actually, too, a very common question is, is this a scam? So no, it's not a scam, this is a legitimate program. That was a very common question as well. And again, the information session last night, very good turnout. Thank you to the police station for hosting this, it was standing room only, but Good Energy did a very good job with answering questions and explaining, especially about the renewable energy piece to it, so that was a big focus. And again, I would just really like to recognize Lynn for doing so much work for town meeting preparation on the warrant, the special town meeting warrant. Her and Emily have been working on the outreach materials for the meeting, and so I just really want to recognize the work that those two have been putting in, in the office.
Here, here. We really do appreciate you, Ms. McDowell.
Very good. And again, I'm going to mention Tony DePry, and myself sat with Kevin Tucci, he's the host of Crosstalk and Municipal Focus, he's well-known in the area. And we, we talked about our town meeting warrant, we talked about the override, we talked about the MBTA articles. So hopefully, that clip should be on the Whitman Hanson Community Access site sometime this week.
I've been looking, I've been like
Yeah, he didn't give us an exact date, he just said, give me a week, so.
Okay.
To be continued. Our Veterans Agent, Joe Gombachus, has been very busy planning the Memorial Day festivities parade. He does have a number of organizations already on board, so more details to come in the next few weeks.
Do we have the band this year?
The Whitman Hanson Regional School District band, because it goes every other year.
No, he's got a band from the National Guard.
Oh, then, whoa, we're moving up in the world, okay. All right.
Our town audit has been received, we've just received that, so I'm going to be scheduling and reaching out to our representative to come and, and present the audit results to the, the board sometime either June or July. So I did give them some dates and waiting for confirmation. And also regarding the personnel policy, I did receive the draft, it is on my desk, it's 106 pages, so I will be reviewing that over the next week as time allows, but I do have it. And so that's been a long process, but I have the draft on my desk. And that will, that completes my town administrator report for this, this meeting.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn for executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, assessor, highway director, police chief, deputy police chief, executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss